Good evening. This is meeting number fifteen, it's two thousand eighteen at five thirty PM, and we are in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. Meeting number twenty is now called to order. Kathleen? Uh, let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, let's roll call, please.
Rinker?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Graham Murray?
Here.
McCambeau?
Here.
Okay, on the agenda tonight, first we have, uh, we have one mayor's award. I have to say, there's never been any man in my life that's been more influential than my father, obviously. Uh, but he passed away when I was just a young man, and so I kinda looked to other, uh, adult males, uh, for, uh, for different qualities that I looked up to that I could glean from. And, uh, for about thirteen, fourteen years, I was in the service business, and one of the places that I visited was, uh, Case Company, and I got a chance to meet, uh, Denny Wilkerson. And he was somebody that embodied a lot of those qualities, uh, that I missed, that I didn't have in my father. And, uh, I'm, I'm glad to say that I'm put in this position where I can recognize you, even though you fought me all the way, but I appreciate you showing up tonight. I want to recognize you, uh, for all the qualities and all the things that, uh, you did for me, whether you realize it or not. Anyway, so on tonight, it is my privilege, uh, to give you this, uh, mayor's award. Being known on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your commitment, dedication, and the way you lead by example has been an encouragement to me as a young man and into adulthood. I'm very honored to consider you a friend. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, this mayor's award is presented to my friend, Denny Wilkerson. Come on down.
Don't believe a lot of what Shane tells you.
We never do.
But I want to thank him and thank everybody that was related to this, and I hope I keep paying it up to Shane. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next we have just a quick surprise, and then we'll get into the meeting, but, uh, we're going to be, uh, saying goodbye to Charlie Nichols. He's been such a tremendous blessing to the city of Burlington, and, uh, it's gonna be hard to, uh, to let you go, but we don't have a choice in that. We've got to, uh, we have to say goodbye and part ways, but we wish you the best in your future life. And, uh, these four years, man, you really did it, so we just want to, uh, recognize you first off with a one clap, council. That's for you, my friend. Being known on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian, no matter where you go. You are one of a kind, and as far as I'm concerned, one of the best. When we needed the best, you gave us your best. Throughout your stay with us, you've had the Eye of the Tiger, and now we have...
The Tiger Grant.
The Tiger Grant. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, this mayor's award is presented to Mr. Charlie Nichols. Would you please come on down? Mr. Charlie Nichols, we appreciate you as well. Please have a word, my friend.
Well, when I came here four years ago, I didn't know what I was getting myself into, but I don't think that there's any better place that we could've ended up. We've had a lot of firsts here for our family, you know, first job out of college, first house. Raised our first kid here. Really, those events that kinda formed the building block or the foundation of a life, so Burlington will always be a part of us, and we've really enjoyed our time here, and we're leaving behind a lot of great friends and great people. So, thank you all, and...
Charlie Nichols, let's close out.
Better group of people.
Let's close out, give them another one pipe, everybody. That's for you, Charlie.
That's for you. Thank you, Charlie.
All right. Before we get into the ugly, I'll, uh, Mr. Wilkerson and Nichols' family, you guys can dip on out of here. You don't stick around for the rest.
Charlie, unless you want to stay for another riveting city council meeting.
Thank you, sir. All right. Okay. Next on the agenda tonight, we have the consent agenda. All matters listed under item one consent agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have four resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving final acceptance and release of retention monies for the two thousand seventeen Agency Street Widening Project West End. The third is a resolution authorizing City of Burlington to financially support the Great River Housing Trust Fund for the fiscal year two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, supporting the two thousand nineteen grant application to the state housing trust fund. And the fourth is a resolution approving an operating agreement for placement of apparatus for EMS response. We also have two appointments, Mayor Protem.
Yes, we have, uh, for the Animal Hearing Board, reappointing Angela Beard for, uh, through your term, and the Flint Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, reappointing Sally Box. Thank you.
Well done. Is there anybody that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent? I see none, council?
None.
Your honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under item one consent agenda.
Okay.
Moved inside, Kathleen?
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye. Well done. Uh, this is time set for hearing for consideration of sale of property, parcel number sixteen dash seventeen dash two twenty-eight dash zero forty-three, located south of the property, locally known as seven fifteen Shakacon Drive, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Publication has been made. Mr. Tisland?
Uh, this lot is, uh, located directly behind Parkview Care, uh, site at seven fifteen Shakacon Drive. Uh, this is the area, uh, at the previous meeting, um, we secured a, uh, sewer easement, uh, through this property and through the property to the south at seven twenty-six Blackhawk, uh, for sewer access to, uh, the Parkview Care site, uh, that we intend to subdivide and develop there. Um, and, uh, I guess receipt of that easement, uh, we noted in that resolution that we'd, uh, worked to transfer sale of this property to the owners of seven twenty-six Blackhawk for consideration of that easement. So that's what we're doing at this point, is, um, selling the property there, uh, located north of seven twenty-six Blackhawk, uh, to the owners, uh, that can be combined with their lot, um, uh, for consideration of that easement. Uh, this lot does not serve a purpose to the larger lot. It, uh, kinda makes sense to go with this lot to even out the rear property line, uh, in accordance with the homes on e- to the east and west of this property as well. So, um, this is basically a, a sale of property for that easement that was granted at the previous meeting.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none, council?
Good.
All right.
I moved close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution serving sale of property, parcel sixteen dash seventeen dash two-two-eight dash zero-four-three, located south of the property, locally known as seven-one-five Shakacon Drive, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Second, Kathleen, let's take the vote.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Okay. Number two. Uh, this is time set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending section fifty-eight point one-nine-two, Motorized Vehicles of Chapter Fifty-eight Noise Control of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Publication has been made.
Chief? A citizen had contacted the council here about, uh, the noise on Highway thirty-four from, uh, Jake Brakes on, uh, tractor trailers, and so, uh, I had done some research with various communities, uh, both, uh, away from ours and close by. West Burlington has an ordinance that prevents, uh, engine braking out there. Uh, so we, uh, I kinda went with the same language. It is unlawful for the driver of any vehicle to use or operate within the city any mechanical exhaust device, engine brake, compression brake, or similar device that results in excessive loud or unusual noise from such a vehicle. Evidence that the noise from the operation of such device is audible at a distance of a hundred feet from the motor vehicle is prima facie evidence of violation subject to find as determined to be a simple misdemeanor. So, uh, with signage hopefully along Highway thirty-four and, uh, the city limits, uh, majority of that would probably happen out here, uh, right around the bridge, since there's an incline and, and decline there, so, uh, that would probably, uh, be a majority of the signage that would need it or where it's happening at, for them slowing down, coming down to the bridge.
Any questions? You guys good?
Yeah.
Any concerns from the audience? I see none.
Uh, your honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second twice. Kathleen?
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending section fifty-eight point nine, parentheses two, I don't know how to say that, I guess, Motorized Vehicles for, of Chapter Fifty-eight Noise Control of the Century, or City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
A little bit of struggle.
Happens that way sometimes. Kathleen, let's vote, that'll be easy.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance.
Your honor, I have a motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending section one hundred point six-twoD, Determination of Stormwater Utility Fee Right-of-Way of Chapter One Hundred Stormwater Management and Drainage Systems Utility of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Second.
Thank you.
This ordinance came up as a result of, uh, with the new stormwater, uh, fee structure that we have, the airport was significantly impacted, as you would expect from runways, uh, have, have a large amount of hard surface and pervious surface. As we tried to get a, a feedback to where, um, it was before, find a, a solution for making that be, uh, be viable and possible, uh, one of the things that we looked at was in terms of right-of-way, which is what we are addressing here tonight. Uh, we've already had an exclusion from the stormwater fee for public highways, roads, alleys, and rail right-of-way, uh, as an ex- as exemptions from the stormwater utility fee. Uh, this amendment adds the public airport runway right-of-way and public airport taxiway right-of-way to that definition.
Anything else you want to throw in there? James?
Last is mine.
Well said. Questions or comments from the audience? Anyone? I see none. You guys have been a lovely audience tonight. Counsel?
Final reading.
Kathleen, let's do this.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, now's the time that we will entertain comments from the audience. Anyone have comments, concerns? Okay. Again, you guys have been fantastic tonight. Mr. Tisland? Kathleen? Painted butter.
How, just, uh, I'm gonna miss Charlie, big shoes to fill.
Well said. Mr. Phillips?
Echo those sentiments, uh, it's amazing what kinda impact someone that goes above and beyond can have. His, uh, his impact will have, uh, generations of Burlington people feel it, so hats off to Charlie for a great job. Uh, I don't really have much, except for the water's going down, thankfully. It looks like it's, uh, gonna be back to a manageable la- level here within a week, so that's great news for us.
Right on. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, of course.
Of course?
Well, um, the Burlington Lunchtime Chamber Music Series is going on again, uh, and that's the third Wednesday of every month, so that'll be this, uh, yeah, this Wednesday. From twelve fifteen to twelve forty-five, it's a free concert at the First United Methodist Church. Uh, it's short, thirty minutes, good time, especially for those that are down here. Um, and that is it.
Works for me. Counselor?
Uh, I just want to say hats off to, uh, city staff. Uh, you guys did the day in the park this last weekend. Um, my daughters and I were out there, and, uh, Don was able to show them how to play, uh, uh, Jax? Jax? Okay. Uh, anyways, um, just huge, uh, applause for you guys. Um, I know you take a Saturday to do that, so appreciate it.
Why is everyone pointing?
Why is everyone pointing?
Uh, and then Don, maybe we can have an update on more carts, ours, we got them all delivered, but go ahead and add first.
Mr. McGregor, Assistant City Manager.
Well, I wanted to give you an update, as you've seen, uh, the river levels kinda progressed since last Monday when we talked. Um, I wanted to give you an update, I know that there's been some concern. Um, we met today with the engineer on the project with the wall, uh, there's some cracks that have been seeping. Uh, some of them are, it, it's bounded, it was gonna, some of it was gonna seep no matter what, but there are some cracks that we need the contractor to take care of. Um, and then the panels itself, there's some seeping that's going on. Uh, we're gonna talk with the per- the product person, the flood wall, or Flood Control America, um, and we're gonna try and take a look at a, a bottom seal that's a little bit different. Um, it, some of the imperfections in the concrete are exposed when you don't have as much room to fill in that gap. Um, and then on the way, and when we take it apart, we're gonna try and check and see, I, the section sixteen, which is in the gap, actually had a, had a kind of a leak between the bottom panel and the second panel. Um, but most of the issue was actually taken care of because we have the trench drain system, which is, which is kind of nice. You know, we went up and saw Davenport. They didn't have a trench drain system or anything, and so when it rained, it caused a lot of havoc. Um, so our trench drain system runs down and goes into a wet well, so you see the stormwater pumps there, uh, they're throwing the water over top of the wall. That is, that is, has the trench drain, but it also has some storm sewer on the parking lot north of the port, um, at the auditorium, and then south of the auditorium as well, so it cl- and it has seepage lines below, so it collects a lot of water in there, and so that's why you're seeing those pumps, uh, pumping over top of the wall. Um, but I wanted to give you kind of, I, I sent this in an email, uh, the red is our current, uh, flood protection. On Saturday, I sent out an email because we didn't really quite know where the river was going to be. Uh, the yellow was our future, if it jumped up above twenty-two-five, uh, where we would be putting the top of the panels or the wall, the panels on top of the wall. Um, I do think that, assuming that this flood is on its way down for good, uh, it was a good test, I guess, to show people what the wall, uh, entailed. Who'd throw up those images? For a comparable most recent flood, that was two thousand and thirteen, our crest was at twenty-two-six. Um, and that is probably thigh-high or so worth of water in the auditorium port parking lot there. Um, and then if you go to the next picture, it kinda gives you an idea of, of the impact that that north, uh, HESCO wall and then the permanent wall has on the port. You know, we would've lost, not a loss, we would've evacuated the port building and had everybody move out of there for the time being. And since then, we had two ac- we had a couple activities at the port, and then the auditorium also had some functions, so it's good to see that, you know, what we've saved, uh, because of the flood wall. So, you know, we learned a lot, because we didn't really know how, how protecting on the north part of that would work. When we've, we've had several trials this year already, I'm, you know, I'd be happy to see no more flooding happen for the rest of the year, but, um, it, you know, we're, we're learning, but we, you know, we've, we've got some things going. Uh, you also see some changes here. Uh, the railroad is, uh, pushing for some access to their tracks. Uh, we are across their railroad right-of-way. Uh, it looks like it's gonna dip below an allowable level on Thursday, uh, so we will be taking HESCOs down around, uh, you know, around the track area. Uh, we will not take down fully, just because we don't have, we wanna see the river return to a, you know, a lot lower level, but to be able to get the rail to the function, we need to try and, you know, assist as best we can to get the Hawkeye hole, as I call it, the, the square that we had to put up because of the water equalized, and it started coming out the top, so we have to take a pretty good section of that down and then across the tracks on the north part there, so you'll see that happen here this week. Answer any questions, any of you have, on what, you know, what, what we've done and why we've done it and...
Was the leaking in the contract, in the concrete, or was it, I, I know there was leaking with the seals.
Mm-hmm. There is, I wouldn't say there's leaking in the concrete, there's some seepage, uh, that you see, and, uh, I exposed a couple of pretty good-sized faulted areas that need to be corrected. Um, and I, you know, our sit- our engineer on the project saw that and took note of the things that need to be corrected. So I think there's gonna maybe be some routing out and some, some epoxy put in there to, to assist it.
And it was kinda nice to go up and take a look at the Ux wall around Davenport, um, and see, uh, how theirs performed versus ours, because they have some of the same seepage type issues, and their system isn't set up to address it as well as what ours is, so you can see each, their, their seepage isn't as bad on the bottom seals, and it has to do, it's a different type of product. I think that has helped them a little bit to address it, which is where you're looking for modification on the...
Correct. A different bottom seal, I think, would help us tremendously. I, and I also think as the, as the river comes up and goes through those pores of the concrete, I think that next time you won't see the same amount of seepage coming through, because it fills with sediment and, and other type of materials, so. Other than that, I think, you know, my staff performed pretty admirably, you know, ta- taking on something they had no idea what they were, you know, really getting themselves into. I'm glad that we didn't have to put the top of the wall on, just as a, you know, doing those gaps took a little bit of learning, and I'm glad that we labeled everything per panel, because when you do construction like that, it's not gonna go in, you know, perfectly as you had hoped it would, so, you know, concrete does not really move a whole lot.
Well, as a, as a person that had a business on the riverfront for a long time, for forty years, I can tell you that that and the performance we've had is so much better than what we had before, so we're, we're blessed to have. How many man-hours do you think you saved?
To try and HESCO that hole, I don't know that you would try and put HESCO barriers up the same way that you did the wall, but you would, you would, in the past, what we've done is we've ringed around the lift station on the further south, and then we've ringed around the auditorium, we've actually made connections at some point, too, and then we go across in, uh, the crossing on, uh, Jefferson, or not Wa- uh, Valley Street up to Front Street, and then we'd go down Front Street. So, to do that, I, you're talking a lot about a, a ton of man-hours. Those HESCOs are, they're, they really do stop the water, but they are not forgiving on manpower and materials. That's a lot of sand. So, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't have an estimate. It was a learning curve, too, on setting up those gaps this time versus what it will be in the future.
But it's safe to say we saved hundreds of hours of man-hours.
I would, uh, save a lot of man-hours. Part, you, you didn't get to save as much as you could have, because we had that opening on...
Oh, that's right.
The, the hole in, in the Hawkeye, that took us way more ti- you know, we would've been done. I think we even performed until Thursday afternoon late last week to try and get everything done, just because you're trying, you're trying to work around railroad tracks, and was, we had a belt placer in there, we probably normally, we wouldn't have normally done it for one, but two, we had it, we had a belt placer there, so we went too high just in case something happened. You already spend the two thousand dollars to get a belt placer there. Um, so we went too high on it, you know, in the future, we're never gonna have to touch that, that aspect of it. And we're actually looking, there's another ring further to the east of that, uh, there's some, uh, concrete that's kinda floating with manhole lids, and those lids will surcharge as the river level backs up, the Hawkeye. So like, right now, it's probably around Fourth or Fifth Street, that, the equalization of the stormwater. Um, so those, those manholes, uh, have water coming out of, so we have to ring them to contain that. I think that we're gonna look at something other than HESCO barriers to try and do that, just because we're gonna do that all the time until we get a, a lift station pump.
We've looked at a few different products, but it'd be nice to see them in action somewhere, too, to see how...
I'd like to see this river level go down and then try and plan around doing something like that here. The product that I've seen that I think would really work is called Muscle Wall. It's a, it's like an eight-foot plastic wall that you can end up reusing, you don't have to worry about... The thing about HESCOs is, a lot of the ones that are on the bottom that have been...
They're shot.
Wet, they're gone. They're, they're, they are destroyed, so I'd say about forty percent of them end up being destroyed, and you have to replace them, so...
The cloth material doesn't last for long.
It doesn't hold up. Sometimes they can refurbish them, because the, the, the brackets itself are safe, but they don't hold up as long either after they're refurbished, so.
Good. Thank you, sir. Don? Gonna give us, uh, an update on the trash cans? Your excitement is overwhelming.
Uh, tomorrow, we will, um, we've been assembling a list of people who've called indicating that they desire to change the size of their cart. I think we have somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, three hundred and forty-five, three hundred and fifty addresses that are asking for sizes different than what they have. We're gonna start tomorrow, and won't be very efficient, because we don't really have any carts in inventory, so we see this house here has a thirty-five, and they wanna go to a sixty-five, and there's a house over here that has a sixty-five, and they wanna go to a thirty-five. So we go get this one, and we take the cart over there, and this exchange-type stuff. Not gonna be very efficient, um, we don't have a lot of time between now and November first. Uh, but we're gonna try to continue to do that for the next, uh, week, week and a half, until we receive our order of, uh, yet-to-be-manufactured carts. But, uh, when that arrives, then things will pick up a little bit more as far as efficiency, hopefully, and delivery rate, so... Um, we did have a few carts available today, and I sent one of our men out to deliver carts to a couple of houses. I have people running out from their house, waving at the truck, saying, "Stop here, stop here." But, uh, he has a route that he's, uh, got laid out for him, have addresses he has to go to. That will be the same thing that'll happen for the next, uh, couple of weeks, and, uh, just be patient, and we hope to get your cart to you, um, in a timely manner before November first.
Sounds good. Yeah, they look, they look good.
I don't know if there's been any improvements regarding, uh, nuisances, or when I look down the alleys and it seems to me that things look good, but maybe it's just the uniformity of having the same color and lid on the carts. But, uh, no, I think they'll be an attractive addition to our garbage collection program.
I agree, and I haven't seen any lids blowing around, so I think that's a benefit. You don't have to drive like this on a windy day through the street, which is nice.
How, um, are the collectors, uh, the guys out there actually doing the collecting, are they, what's their feedback?
Well, they're sore in different muscles than they were before. Um, you know, ha- pushing and pulling on the carts, uh, you're using some different muscles than you would if you're actually lifting and carrying. Um, but, uh, I think that they've indicated, they've indicated that their backs are not as sore. Um, it's a different type of program, and it'll take some time to get adjusted to, uh, the most effective, the most efficient way of moving a cart from point A to point B when it's on wheels. And of course, we all know that there's different surface conditions in the alleys and even on the streets that they have to contend with, so, uh, I think they're, they're working hard at, uh, making this change to this program. I know that, uh, I was approached at the, uh, City in the Park, uh, Day in regards to the orientation or the positioning of the cart relative to the street or to the alley. If you look at the lids of these carts, there, there is language on the lid, and there are arrows that point away from the wheels towards the front of the cart, and it says something to the... and it says something to the effect of, "This is to be pointed to the street." Well, that's led some people thinking that even though they used to have alley pickups, they're supposed to take it out in the street, which that's not the case. Most places, it's the same set-out location. But those arrows are ju- generic labeling that's intended for a fully automated collection system. If we had a fully automated truck, which that may come about someday, then the carts definitely have to be positioned so that the arrow is pointing, whether it be towards the street or whether it be pointed towards the abble, the alley travel lane in order for that arm to come out properly and dump that cart. But in lieu of those uh fully automated trucks, the orientation of the cart is not critical. Uh we purposely did not indicate you must have your cart in this position because the different types of surfaces that exist in the city, the positioning of the cart is best left up to the homeowner that they feel that's gonna be the most stable and less a problem for them. Um but the men have to grab the handles, so some people are purposely turning the handles toward the travel lane, and that does probably make it a little bit easier for the collectors and a little bit faster.
Sounds good. You guys good?
Good.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
Would say thanks to all the staff who was involved with City Day. Um so the both of it, not your, their normal activities to have to do. I think it's a great thing that we can do to see out in, in front of the community and, and have all their departments represented, so I really do appreciate it. Uh it would have been nice to have had it be a warmer day. I think the loudest, the award for the loudest voice goes to the mayor. Um he certainly commanded attention out there.
I don't appreciate your attitude tonight.
Did a, did a, you did, were very animated, and I, that's, that's great. Um but we still had quite a few kids who went through, and it, I think it was still a good event. I think that uh as we look in future years, a group that talks or kind of coordinates that may look at doing it earlier in, potentially in September. Um the week that we do it is, this was a statewide event uh four or five years ago, started by the League of Cities. Um and they had this as the week that for ci- to celebrate City Day, and this is, we kind of developed it out of it. They're no longer doing City Day. Um it's one that we do like, and we'd like to continue to do, and we can be a little bit more flexible with dates now that we're not trying to coordinate with the states, so that might happen as we move forward. Um would mention uh local ops and sales tax funding. We've got our numbers in for our true-up payment. Uh along with, we'd already gotten numbers for what our uh, and I can't remember when we got that, that's back in July for the monthly payments, but with the true-up, um which is, we don't get until, we got what, end of last week. Um our local ops and sales taxes is gonna be three hundred thousand below budget for this year. Um so put some perspective in where we've been. Um local ops and sales tax collections this year will be right about three point eight million. FY fourteen was at that three point eight million level. FY ten was at three point seven. Uh every other year has been higher. So you can, this, this is a fairly significant decrease. As perspective on the high end, FY seventeen was four point six million. So we've come down quite a bit. Um a lot of factors can play into it. You know, we're talking with uh, was talking with the chamber about this to some extent this morning. One mentioned to them that uh Fort Madison had emailed me a few weeks ago when they got their numbers for the new year, and uh we're talking about how they'd seen their percentages come down fifteen percent this year from last year, and it was fifteen percent lower last year from the year before that, and we're not a whole lot different, and they were wondering what, how did, how did they, how do you attribute it? Um one of the things I mentioned to him, besides not knowing their local economy, but just with the plant construction that went on, uh not only did we have so many people here working, but all the materials that were purchased had sales tax collections on them. Um and so that was something that spiked us up. I don't know how much. It's hard to get numbers. You don't get any individual information on this from the state, so it's hard to know where those things factor in. But it does have a big impact on our ability to fund projects. Um I think we can make it through this year. Uh we, we, we knew going into closeout of last year that these, the, these years, this year's numbers were gonna be lower than what we budgeted, and we're, we had some cutbacks on transfers that we did out of local ops and sales tax to try to help with that. Um and we'll have some in this, in this year as well. One of them that's natural to the general fund. Uh we do the first fifty percent uh of sales tax collections goes to the general fund, and that number will just naturally be fifty percent lower than what we'd originally budgeted. Um but it will have an impact as we move into this budget season and look at what we can afford for capital projects. I don't think we'll have to cut anything out of this year's capital projects to make it happen because we did have a balance, a decent balance, but uh we will have to have less on our CIP as we, that's funded specifically from this than what we had budgeted in the current year for a five-year CIP. Um so that's a challenge that's out there. Uh Matt did bring back good news in terms of just where we stand. We had talked during the budget cycle about after that, um we talked at the budget cycle of potential for a ground emergency medical transport. Is that right? G E M T. Um the potential for having a bill go through the state legislature, which was approved in March or April. Um the groundwork for that is in place to get enhanced Medicaid funding uh for ambulance service as we move forward. Uh timeline for that looks to be that we may begin to start, see those payments start next July. Uh that's tentative. We don't know exactly when, but if, we're looking at the potential to see a couple of hundred thousand of enhanced payments into our uh ambulance service to support their operations, which will help as, as um, you know, as the safer grants going off, that at least partially compensates for that uh it, as we move forward, so. Some good, some bad news there.
It takes some good.
Quit shopping on Amazon, people.
Um I would just point out, uh and we'll talk a little bit at staff tomorrow about this, just with the Tiger Grant. It's a phenomenal project. It's a timeline that goes through twenty-twenty-two, I think. That's for project closeout, and that's fifteen months after project completion, so twenty-twenty-three. Um the paperwork that's gonna go on with this is gonna be a pain, and we just lost our person who would have been doing that. And, you know, we may get someone who comes in and does that again, but that's not in the, the ability to do that's not in that job description. Uh Charlie brought a lot more, and that's an area that he brought a lot more to us than what was necess- necessarily part of what that job is supposed to do. Um so I don't know how that's gonna work, but you got, when we do projects like this, there is an awful lot of time that goes with it. You know, you guys had a webinar that I didn't get in on, or phone con- conference call on this last Tuesday. Um which reminds me of DOT funding. Um but um the gr- the base app agreement that comes out of that is, I wanna say it's like forty pages long. And, and uh we don't have anyone identified to go through that, the details on that and to get that done, so we'll have to talk about how are we gonna do that? Which of us is the lucky participant to do it? Um and that's just one step of many along the way that will have that same issue come up for, from a staffing perspective. So as you think about just what we can and can't accomplish, everything that we try to do, there's a cost to in terms of time and and effort and what, what has to get dropped in order to make it happen. Not that we can't do things, just you gotta understand that there's a limit to what we can accomplish. Um I didn't make it to that conference call because I went up to uh DOT's uh meeting. They uh considered our funding request for RISE funding out in the park, Business Park. Um pretty much knew that if they were gonna be considering the request, that it would get approved, but it's nice to go up and do it. Um just in case they have any questions. And they did approve that. Uh so that's one that we'll be having contract documents come forward over the course of the next couple of months. I think that application, by the time it was modified, was a, they shortened the length of the road that was eligible for for RISE funding. So it's about, that portion of the project's an eight hundred and forty thousand dollar project, RISE funding four hundred and twenty thousand. We'll have a, I would assume that we'd be looking to go out if that's a project for next year. I think it has been in our, our current CIP in the following year's budget. It will get moved up, and that actually works better. I think that we'll see how we work that and coordinate with the rest of that road getting done. But the timing on that works better for, with the indoor rec facility getting done. Um that facility is behind a couple of weeks, is what I've heard uh its original schedule. Um but it is, is underway. You go, get a chance to go out there and take a look. They've done a lot of the concrete work, not all of the foundation has been finished yet, I don't think, at least it wasn't the last I looked at it. Um they're in the process of trying to fill, I don't know if anyone's seen the advert, ads on it, but their main position, they're trying to get filled. They're, I think, in the interview process on that now. Um trying to get someone on board to start doing some scheduling and say, "Look to heck." Try to have events hosted this next, uh over the, the late winter part. I think uh mid-January maybe is their, uh current timeframe uh to try to be open. I don't know, again, I don't know whether they'll hit that or not. The weather has certainly impacted them like it has some of our other projects. Um suppose I've talked long enough to take what could have been a sore beating.
Well, let's double-check. Are you done?
I think so. I could talk about other things, but get them out of.
Mayor, uh Saturday, uh we attended, you were there at the NAACP banquet, and uh Major Grimshaw was recognized down there uh for a citizens' award by the NAACP for his work in the community and the police department for uh minority recruitment. Uh it was a great honor. Uh he's done a lot of, a lot of, uh, he's put a lot of dedication into that, that program within the community, and it's very heartfelt, and I, I think it was received very well, and it was a nice event to attend and to see that recognition, and, and uh if any of you know Darren very well, uh he, he uh definitely puts his heart and soul into everything, and, and he did uh with, with uh that minority recruitment effort, and it goes well beyond that with his relationships uh that have, uh, he's uh built with, between the community and the police department itself, so uh I just wanted to recognize him in front of the council and, and make it known that, that he did receive that award, and it was very well-deserved.
Fantastic. Thank you. Well said. Um yeah, to piggyback off on that, just want to give a shout out to uh all the staff that showed up for that. I've been going for I'm not sure how many years now since I've been on the council, but um uh it's always just good to see representation, and Chief was there with his lovely wife. Uh God bless her. She puts up with so much. Listen. But it was, it was good to see, uh, it was good to see everybody there. Uh I, I need to, my grandson is watching tonight. Tomorrow's his birthday. He's gonna be nine. Happy birthday, Keegan. Um the, I also want to recognize everybody that participated in the Alzheimer's Walk Saturday morning. Uh that was a phenomenal success. It was on the riverfront. We wouldn't be able to have it there if it wasn't for the flood wall, so it was phenomenal. A lot of good people showed up, and uh glad to be a part of that. Also glad to be a part of City Day in the park as well. Uh yes, I was loud. We played some mayor games, and uh, uh we had a great time, and I heard some little kid before he even got to my game, he's, he's walking toward me, and he had just left, uh, he's coming from your area. I don't know what he had did, but he was saying, "Mom, this is awesome!" And, you know, I, I look forward to that. It's a, that's what we're there to do, and yeah, for all the city staff that showed up and did what they did. I still think one of the greatest things was, uh, was it three years ago when you did the little water, water test deal? Was that three years ago? Uh I still have one of those. I'm a kid too, and I wanted one of those, and uh, uh man, if we could ever do that again, that was really cool. It was well-received. So anyways, uh phenomenal week in Burlington. Uh again, shout out to all the staff, everybody that helps uh make all this run. Extra shout out to uh Katie Music and Tap the Gerdner. Uh they do a fantastic job for us as well, so. Anything else, James? Did, did uh your team lose this weekend? It doesn't matter. Go Hawkeyes. Are we ready to close out, guys? Oh, I'm sorry. Peanut butter. You had one more before we close?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware that Head of Gilbert starts this weekend, so starting Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Perkins Park will hold a plethora of stuff. I just love that word, plethora.
That's right.
Of stuff. So a lot of vintage things. I was pricing things yesterday. So vintage toys and dolls and games and housewares, as long with that modern clothing, a resale shop, uh so at half of the proceeds go to the children's in the area. So eyeglasses, prescriptions that, that children may need for school nurses, so. Great cause. Come out and support Head of Gilbert Sale starting Friday at Perkins Park.
All right. Got my best clothes from Head of Gilbert. This suit came from Head of Gilbert. It didn't, but it could have. Are we ready to roll?
Yes.
Let's do it before it turns ugly. Kathleen?
Please someone introduce.
Motion to close.
Second.
There you go. Kathleen, now put the finisher on.
Riker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
The Campbell?
Yes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.